Let's call the regular meeting of January 7th, the Simsbury Zoning Commission to order. We have a full slate of commissioners, so we don't need to appoint an alternate. Approval of the minutes of December 17th. Anybody have any comments? I have a couple.
Dave, I saw just a couple things. Line 132 and 133.
Okay.
Line 132 starts with the word "note," and I'm quite certain it's supposed to be just[41.51][41.51]"not." So there's an extra "e" there that should be deleted. And then the line underneath at 133 starts with "as note regarding." I'm not sure what that's really supposed to be, but I don't think it's supposed to be "note." So I'm not sure what goes there, but that isn't it.
Maybe "as noted."
Sounds like it says "not regarding temporary reading," but... That was in a motion. Can you clarify that?
That would be the motion from the staff report for the conditions of approval.
But what's it supposed to be?
What was the note eight supposed to be?
I'd have to look at the condition of approval or borrow someone's meeting minutes. I don't have the meeting minutes in front of me.
Okay, let's note that that should be corrected to be what the staff report was.
133.
132, yeah, the "e" should have been deleted.
There's another one, though.
The next line.
Yeah, the very next line.
No, the second, the 133 note, that should remain. That was part of the motion. It discusses the plan details that had to be changed on the final plans. That should be note.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. And I have one on two, line 210. The future events at Highcroft aren't on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. I think that should be deleted.
It should just be "future events" was the question.
Yeah, I mean, whoever owns the property can come in and apply for something. Anybody anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as modified?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Carry six, nothing. Okay, first order of business is a public hearing. Michael Glynn, Mr. Secretary, can you read the call?
Application 1864 of Michael Glynn, CFM, CZEO, Director of Planning and Community Development, applicant on behalf of the Simsbury Zoning Commission for text amendments to Chapter 4, Section 3, .3, .i, and Chapter 4, Section 3, .4, .d of the Simsbury Center Code reclassifying distilleries, wineries, and breweries in the Simsbury Center Code area as restaurant/bar uses instead of light industrial.
Any comments from staff on this particular?
This is just the application that the commission asked staff to file on behalf of Mr. Luca, who was looking at the Hickson property, which is the old train station building behind the Bank of America building on Railroad Street.
Right.
And he would, although this would allow the use in the zoning district, he still would have to come before the commission for a special exception for the liquor license for the establishment.
Comments? Anybody?
Yeah, I have a few, but what is the current status of that individual's business, Mike? I'm looking at the Simsbury zoning regulations, and I don't see the words "winery," "distillery," "brew pub," "brewery." Those words are not in the current regulation, as nearly as I can tell. I mean, I didn't read the 178 pages, line by line, but without those words in there, I don't understand how he could be running some sort of a distillery somewhere in Simsbury if I understood his comments when he came here several weeks ago.
So he came before the commission probably about 18 months ago?
Somewhere in there.
Maybe closer to two years now. He looked at industrial properties and actually has a liquor license and a use approved at One and Five Mill Pond, which it was determined at the time that because it was an industrial location and he was manufacturing goods, it was a use allowed in the zoning district. If he was looking to do the use in other places in the town, he would have to amend the regulations. And he had a liquor license approved by the commission with a layout, a tasting room, production area, et cetera, under the industrial regulations.
Okay. I don't want to belabor it, but what it sounds like to me is unlike some others who come here and we say, "Well, you can't do that because it's not named in our regulations." And if it's not named, it's prohibited. Like, you know, a wind farm, for instance. We don't allow wind farms because they're not named in our regulation, but for the distillery, we've maneuvered the thing a little bit, it sounds like to me. But the thing that I noticed, though, is that absent the words "brewery," "distillery," "winery" in our regulations, that's what we call the Simsbury zoning regulations. When you look at this town center code and you look at the code for the property where the Hartford used to be, where the Hartford used to be, that enterprise is allowed there. You can have a winery. You could have, you know, those various types of enterprises on that property because it's part of the code. But yet, nowhere else in Simsbury was it written into the code, including the town center code where we had a different consulting firm. Now, I wasn't in on the discussion with the Hartford property, but it makes me wonder if we aren't, you know, if we're doing the right thing here. And I know I read the minutes of the meeting of the planning commission where there was concern expressed that there is no apparent limitation as we revise this wording. We're just going to put it into the restaurant category. And the winery that might be proposed one day could be huge. The same thing is true with breweries, et cetera. And so it makes me wonder if we should take heed of what the planning commission said and maybe give consideration to some sort of limitations here. Because when you look at the Hartford, the zone for the Hartford, it's not allowed in the areas that seem to be residential, you know, the different districts that are allowed under that code. And the reverse is true, the way we're going to do the Simsbury center code, where prescribing it would be allowed in what would be the neighborhood districts, but not allow it in the districts that are not essentially neighborhood districts. So it seems to me that, you know, we're losing some opportunity to have something that's parallel here, and I don't know. That's sort of a thought. That's not an objection to the, you know, proposal. I'm just kind of wondering if any of the other commissioners have concern about where we're headed for here to try to accommodate the one business that came to us. I don't object to accommodating a business, but, you know, this seems to be somewhat deeper water than we anticipated when we said, you know, "Let's try to help this guy." There's more to it than that, and we're really, unless I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I don't really know very much about what's going on across the country with trying to regulate. I mean, it wasn't that long ago that you didn't know, did you know what a brew pub was? Craft breweries? How long have craft breweries been around? This is fairly new stuff in the grand scheme of things, and I just wonder if we're going to end up wishing we didn't do this, but...
Time.
That's all I have to say, Dave.
I'm sorry, Bruce. How about you?
Yeah, actually, when we considered this, this isn't just on their behalf. That's why it's coming from the zoning commission, is because we thought it was kind of a good idea to allow them downtown, because there would be other buildings like Andy's or somewhere else that it would make sense to have something like that. And we currently don't allow it, which is kind of odd in the center. We're not anticipating a Miller's Brewery coming in and building, you know, a masthead because there's no space for it. But these are for craft industries, which would make sense downtown as part of...
Especially right next to the restaurants.
Well, then, why don't we call it a craft winery or a craft brewery?
You're changing our uses. We're making it broad enough.
Yeah, because if you call it a craft brewery, then like Coors will be like, "Hey, good news, we're a craft brewer."
Yeah, then you have to define it.
So, you know, putting a label on it, it's not going to cut it.
I mean, if size is the issue...
But there are accepted definitions for craft brewery, craft distillery.
Are there?
There are accepted definitions for those terms.
Mike had something to say.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Elliott's comment, one thing that maybe the commission could just keep in mind is it'd still be subject to a special exception for the liquor license. So the discussion on scale and the harmonizing with the surrounding neighborhood would come into play at the review of that special exception. So you could say to someone, let's say they wanted to purchase a very, combine a few properties and put it in a large brewery. Well, I don't think this is appropriate, or there needs to be appropriate safeguards so that either you didn't have an adverse effect from traffic. You preserved a streetscape where you didn't just have a large industrial building in the center of town. So you still have, in your existing regs, other means of protecting adverse impacts that this use, a use like this could have if it was too large for the area, and you could say no.
Thank you, Mike. Donna?
Yeah, as far as scale, I mean, I think that's important, and I also, there's a lot of protected buildings in the center, so the idea that you would be able to come in and build...
It would be hard to do, but...
Yeah, but I like the...
Well, you also have the special exception.
Safeguards, right.
Kevin?
No, I'm in favor of the change.
Mike?
I'm in favor of the change.
I think it's a good use for the center.
You can speak.
Yeah, I think it's a good use. I do share some of Bruce's concerns about it. I just, you know, my concern is just to make sure that, you know, that we would keep things to a scale that's acceptable and keeps within the character of the town and zoning regs. So I don't know if there's a way to do that, you know, that would be thoughtful and appropriate but still allow, you know, the latitude for somebody to open a distillery or a craft unit.
Well, the special exception has a list of eight criteria, one of which is harmonizing with the surrounding community, which would come into play when we considered it.
Yeah, I mean, as long as there's that, if you will, safety down, I think that's important. I just don't want to just open it up. So as long as we have that in there, I think that's, you know, we're all aware of that.
Okay, does anyone in the public care to speak to this application? Ten seconds?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second?
Second by Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, it's closed, six, nothing closes. Okay, next item is a public hearing for the Bridge, Bridge of Flowers site. Anyway, can you read the call?
Application 1866 of Jerome Shea, PE, Town Engineer, Town of Simsbury Owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section M of the Simsbury Zoning Regulations for Construction of Flood Plane on the Property Located at One Old Bridge Road, Assessors MAT H11, Block 144, Lot 007, Zone R15.
Okay.
For the record, Adam Castler, Assistant Professional Engineer, City Petticoat, and Staff Engineer for the Town, here on behalf of the Engineering Department to present, feels like finally, One Old Bridge, for our work within the floodplain as well as a site plan amendment. It's been a long time coming. I think 2014, the town acquired the property. It took about a year or two to come to a consensus on what to do with the parcel, and then we had Malone McBroom, who's here tonight, Dave Dixon, our landscape architect. Malone McBroom master planned the parcel along with input from the Open Space Committee. And we're here now with our final step in local approvals. We got our wetlands conservation approval this summer. Zoning Board of Appeals for our setbacks for the pavilion and the shed. A lot of that just kind of centered around being in a floodplain. We needed to keep our structures outside the floodway, and based on grading considerations, too, we wanted to locate the shed up in this location, which Dave will talk to a lot more.
Adam, this application has to do with the construction in the floodplain and a special exception for that. So could you tell us what part of this application is under consideration here?
So basically, the floodplain is the entire parcel. We have, the floodway actually extends into the parcel. It's this line here. And the existing house, a small corner of it, is actually within the floodway. So the whole parcel is in the floodplain itself, and we have an engineering report on the grading and filling within the floodplain. It's a net zero, no increase in filling. Everything balances out on site, so we match those regulations. In terms of locating structures within the floodway, that was one of the considerations with relocating, not relocating, but removing the existing shed and building a new one. The existing shed's actually located within the floodway. So we're locating it up on this side of the parcel right in this area, which will keep it outside the floodway. The pavilion itself is a potentially four-post pavilion, open. It's located within the floodplain, but we feel like any floodwaters that will come in with foundations that were chosen will resist any hydrodynamic forces. And it being small columns, it won't be that, you know, it's not going to push a structure over. The shed itself will have flood vents basically right along the finished floor of that to let floodwaters come in and recede as needed. And I think that probably alleviates all the concerns regarding floodplain and floodway issues. We can turn it over to Malone McBroom right now to kind of run through the whole project and give you an overview of the design itself, if you'd like.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is David Dixon, professional landscape architect with the firm Malone McBroom and 99 Realty Drive in Cheshire. Been working very closely with the town on this, with Adam and with Jeff Shea, for the last couple of years. And it's good to see that it's finally come to fruition, and we're very excited about what's being proposed. In essence, it's a passive recreational facility now, and there will be no change in its use. It will remain a passive recreational use. The pavilion that was mentioned will actually go in here roughly in the location of the existing house. Removal of the house, along with a old retaining wall down in here, results in a net cut, net excavation within the floodway. So actually, flood flows within the floodway will be enhanced as a result of the work that we're doing. We'll be laying that slope back, that existing wall will be laid back into two-to-one slope, and new plantings, indigenous plantings will be put in this place. There's also some selective removal of invasive vegetation proposed in here, and also this little pocket of wetlands over here with new plantings proposed as well in there. There will be a new sidewalk that brings people down along what we're calling the Shade Garden. We're going to be working with the committee, with the fire committee, on selection of the plants in there. I think that was important that we let them have a say in the type of material that they might want to use. So we'll work closely with them on that as well. There'll be a kind of a visitor kiosk there. There's one there now. This one will be a little bit more elaborate in terms of its appearance. And again, I think the flower committee has taken the charge of designing that particular We may end up doing some repaving of the cul-de-sac. It really depends on how the beds come in. We would like to. One of the things we know that we do have to do is there's currently no handicap parking on the site. So we know that we have to create a handicap space that's ADA compliant with 2% maximum pitch in any direction, and so there is a modest amount of area in here that needs to be regraded in order to achieve that. And then there will be a new sidewalk that conveys people over here to the kiosk, to the flower bridge, and then around here, in this fashion, the shade garden is over here. We also are going to enhance the access to the water. Hopbrook flows in here, the Farmington is over here, and we're providing a stuck-in-stone kind of stairway to get you down in case anyone wants to launch a boat, a kayak, overhead canoe, something to that effect. I did bring with me several images that show materials, colors, and things like that. If you're interested, we can go through that at your convenience, your designer.
I think we rely on design review for most of that. We're not color people, right?
Actually, the design review, have any comments on the prominence of the shed? Whether there's be some vegetation behind it or anything? Because it's, when you drive down Old Barge, it seems, Old Bridge Road, it seems to be the most prominent thing to see.
They had no comment on that. I have images of that. If you'd like to take a look at that, it's a 10-by-14 shed, be located here. We are going to use a standing seam roof and hardy plank for the siding, so it's not going to be a vinyl structure.
What color are you going with this other roof?
Gray.
Okay, that's not what's shown clearly.
That is the pavilion.
That's not the pavilion.
No, that's the shed. That's the color.
It's not a metal roof.
But it's not a metal roof.
Correct.
So they approved conceptually a metal roof, but the drawings don't show it.
Correct.
Okay.
So there will be boat access then through the pedestrian path?
Just canoe carrier.
Just out of a dedicated kind of path now?
Correct.
How about railings on that descending walkway? Any railings anywhere on that?
The railings that we have are going to be right in here. Here's where the slope drops off. At the steepest, there'll be a split rail fence, a three-rail fence in here that creates that visual guard against people proceeding any further down the hillside.
Is that shown on the plan?
It is on the plan.
Mike? Questions?
It's all cleaned up.
In the plans, were there two different ways of doing the sidewalk, one with a concrete base and one without?
We are proposing pavers within the area that is drivable. There will be a concrete base, six-inch concrete slab underneath that.
The sidewalks didn't have that?
No.
Okay.
Was that a financial consideration, why not? Where we have brick sidewalks through the center of town, concrete underneath those?
Understood.
But no concrete.
It was a little bit of a financial consideration. There's also not going to be the amount of pedestrian movement on those sidewalks that you would expect in a downtown situation. I mean, when we do a streetscape, if you go up through Burlington, the same bricks that are proposed to be used here, we use in Burlington Center, and that's on a concrete base. The intent there is those pavers are not going to go anywhere for, you know, 40, 50 years. They're going to be there a long time. These will as well, but we just didn't feel the need to put the concrete base underneath the pedestrian section of the block.
So, I mean, this could be a really silly question, but we're bringing all these people down, and there's no bathroom facility?
I'm sorry, there are porulets that are proposed right here. They're included on the plan. There'll be a three-sided screen manufactured of the same hardy plank as the shed, as proposed for the shed. There will also be a water fountain located right here that will be ADA accessible and also have a lower spigot for the dogs.
Is city line the same brick as used on the sidewalks in town center?
It's a similar, similar line. I don't think it's the exact manufacturer. I think it's a Belden or something.
Belden is the manufacturer. City line is the line of...
Right, but I was just wondering if it matches the rest of the bricks downtown.
Oh, that's a good question. It's going to be very close. It'll be very close.
Jackie?
Oh, I think it's going to be much improved. It's a nice plan.
Anybody in the public care to speak to this application? We have a few Bridge of Flowers people.
Deidre McKay, Woodside Circle, Simsbury, Connecticut, co-chair of the Old Drake Hill Flower Bridge. We totally agree with the excitement of the plan. We feel that the town has been great talking to us since Hudson Property was given to the town, about how we felt about different parts of it, and we really appreciate their communication. But in the meeting with the town personnel and Tom and also Jerry Tonner before him, we really are very much in favor of the plan in all parts of it.
Thank you, Deidre. Anyone else care to speak?
Hi, Jan Luntner, 22 Musaco. I'm the secretary of the Old Drake Hill Flower Bridge. And we have been, from the very earliest charrettes, have been involved with the architects and landscape planners and the town committee. And we're really excited about the opportunity to expand, not expand the bridge, but to bring the Hudson property and Little Meadow that's on the other side, to begin to see that as one parcel. I think it will enhance the bridge itself, and it will make it a lot easier for visitors to get there. I think it's going to be a really big draw for the town. And just to let you know, as we are there a lot with the volunteers on the bridge, from the amount of work to take care of the flowers, people are really amazed at how much time is spent there. People have lunch there, they bring their kids there, and seeing the handicap accessibility, it's surprising, the number of elderly people that are brought to the bridge because the flowers are at wheelchair height, touch them, smell them. I think there's a whole lot that this project has to offer the town in the long range. So we're totally behind it. I do have a question. As you were talking about, you guys are not perhaps the color people. Personally, I have some problems, say, with the color of the benches and the bollards. Is it possible that they could be changed, or is what's on the plan, that's it?
The color, we haven't discussed colors. Black has been the accepted color. Everyone believes that black is probably the right way to go. You can put different colors in. You can go as bright as red, blue, and forest green. I've seen forest green, but I wouldn't suggest any of the other brighter colors. The black seems to have a tendency to really help tie everything together, but without being, you know, loud, without having to be kind of loud in your face. So all the new benches were proposed to be black. There's images of what they look like. I'm not sure if you've seen them, but...
I have seen them.
They're quite nice. Dumeor makes a great product. And the bollards, again, are black. Could we go with something different? Yep, we could.
Excuse me. The public audience is now... Public audience is now perusing the comment on the project, not to engage in a dialogue with the...
Well, I'm sorry. I was just asking the question because I wasn't aware of what leeway there was or wasn't. That was really the intent of the question.
Thank you, Jan.
Yeah.
Does anyone else care to speak to the... Yes, sir.
Albert Miller, 86 Riverside Road. I know early on, there was some talk about renting kayaks there or something like that. I know there's a couple of companies in business that do canoe and kayak rentals now. Is it going to be allowed for them to come over there with that truck with the big trailer on it and pick people up and drop them off?
There's nothing in this application that talks about that. I don't know.
No. In order to operate a business, first off, on town property, they'd have to get approval from the Board of Selectmen because that would be operating a business, which we had an issue with this particular, one of the operators using the Peniche Park and Curtis Park to operate his business, and he was told not to use town property. So, the short answer right now, the position is can't use town property to run a private business.
Okay. Any other comments? Going once?
All right, I move that we close the public hearing. Second?
Second by Mike. Any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries six-nothing. The application, public hearing is closed. Next order of business is the application 1684 of the text amendment. I think we have a staff report on it or a staff recommendation on it?
You should have a report from Robin Newton on this one with suggested effective date of...
February 4th.
February 4th. The only reason why we need a little extra time on this one is that we have to, we're in the process of converting the existing code from a PDF into a Word document, and we're going to make sure we don't lose anything in the existing code, so.
And to convert the PDF to Word to edit it.
Yeah.
Isn't there a PDF editing? We don't have an acrobat?
Don't have that capabilities in my office right now. So, unfortunately, I got to bring it from one format to the other and...
I think you can go online and pay 10 bucks or 20 bucks to use it.
I'd have to speak to IT for permission.
That's not our job here.
Yes. I'm sorry to tell the commission that. It's just that...
Okay. In any event...
We have the proposed...
Anybody have concerns with this particular thing?
It wasn't in the digital.
I'm sorry. It just would be a motion, motion to approve with effective date February 4th, 2019.
You ready for motion?
Yep.
All right, I move that we grant the, that we approve the text amendment reclassification as proposed, moving to Chapter 4, Section 3 dot 4 dot D1 Brewery, Winery, and Distillery to Chapter 4, Section 3 dot 3 dot I of the Simsbury Center Code. This text amendment shall become effective on February 4th, 2019.
Second?
Second by Jackie. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries effective February 4th. Okay, the next order of business is the consideration of application 1866. Again, staff has recommended approval. If I can find it.
So, you should have in your packet a staff report from me. There is two attachments, one for the special exception and one for the site plan amendment. So, there's a motion for attachment A for the special exception and B for the next application 1867.
This is the site plan. There's the text amendment. Do you have it?
Yeah.
Thank God we have a secretary. He's got it. Thank you, Jackie. Okay, are we ready for a motion? Everybody happy?
Yeah, I move to approve application 1866 of Jerome Shea, PE Town Engineer, Town of Simsbury owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section M of the Simsbury zoning regs for construction in the floodplain on a property located at 1 Old Bridge Road. The special exception approval is subject to the following conditions. One, a minor copy of the sheet SP is to be prepared for signature by the chairman and filing on the town records. And two, any changes to the project scope which result in additional activities within the floodplain require approval by the zoning commission.
Second?
Second by Jackie. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries six-nothing. Okay, the next application is the site plan amendment for the same property. Anybody have any questions? Would you like to tell us more about the site plan amendment?
I want to hear about it. We hope to start in June of this year. We're kind of allowing everything else to do. Start in June during the drier season because of that work with the retaining wall that's there. Hopefully finish up with the fall planting season and have substantial completion by November. I think that's a good timeframe to do the work for this particular project, and it also allows for some of the events to still go on this year in the burgers on the bridge and the duck race there.
Questions of the commission here? Are we ready to make a motion?
Sure.
I move to approve application 1867 of Jerome Shea, PE Town Engineer, Town of Simsbury owner for a site plan amendment for development of the site at 1 Old Bridge Road. Site plan amendment approval is subject to the following condition. One, pre-construction meeting is required with a zoning enforcement officer and floodplain manager prior to demolition of the existing residence. Two, location of the shed and gazebo are to be staked in the field by a licensed surveyor prior to installation. And three, the commission authorizes staff on their behalf to handle minor modifications to the landscaping plant. Requests for modifications are to be made in writing to staff prior to implementation in the field.
Second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries six-nothing. It's approved. Okay.
Thank you. It's been an amazing destination.
Next order of business is new applications, which I don't think we have any at this point. We do have some correspondence to discuss. Mr. Donohue would like to talk just about what he'd like us to do, what the applicant would like us to do on Talke Ridge, where the ridge attack up there.
Mr. Chairman, the commission, we're working diligently on the SO Simsbury, we're working diligently on the project, and I think it's gone by and you can see that it's in significant progress. Tonight with me is Ugo Orsini of Silverman. He's a site manager for Simsbury, and Paul Bytalliano from BHP to answer any questions that you have. We've come to a point in the project where there's an opportunity to grant sub-COs and have some occupancy of certain areas of the site. There are 18 units which will be available within 30 or 45 days for occupancy. In my letter, I articulate language of the Hartford Form Base Code, which says in part, "All site improvements shall be installed to the satisfaction of the zoning commission before a certificate of compliance, of zoning compliance is issued." A certificate of zoning compliance is a prerequisite to a certificate of occupancy. The zoning commission may require a performance bond as authorized in today's general statutes of the Simsbury and of regs for all improvements not installed prior to a request for a certificate of zoning compliance. We anticipate that the company will be asking for certificates of compliance and COs within 30 or 45 days. There are DOT approvals, which we've got notice today, that the DOT is okay with that so long as upon their approval, the chief of police, who's our traffic, chief traffic officer in town, signs off on that. And so, that's in place. I've passed some pictures now so you can see the status of the site today. Is that interesting? If I may. And I'm sorry, the actual copies are at my office in Hartford, so I have a limited circulation of those. This, if you can pass the stuff down.
We got this from a...
We have it, thank you.
Do you have the pictures of that?
Not the pictures.
There are pictures in this, which might be helpful. I'm sorry that there aren't enough to go around, but we can start to go through it.
Sure.
Oh, there's photos in the back.
Among the stuff I gave is a list of the completed tasks at the site, photos of the site, which show the entrance, the access. They show the area of the condos which are going to be occupied. They also show a couple of what we call feathered aspects of the structures in the street. The street is a binder course, significant binder course, but it doesn't have its finished coat on. And so, there are a couple of pictures there that show how they butt it up tar against the structures to protect the cars and the rest. There are pictures which show that utilities are in and the like. Also, is a map which shows the streets and street numbering system that's going to be there, and there'll be street numbers before any occupancy. Silverman would like to know that this is entirely a private road system, but that the insurance and liability insurance of the site has been fully converted to full public liability insurance at this time, so that there's no, there's full adequate coverage of insurance on that. And there's a... Paul has a couple of maps that he'll pass out. One is the map which shows specifically the area where the units will be occupied.
Oh, good, thank you.
And one is the interior traffic circulation pattern, which shows how the site management will be with the arrows that point to the residential traffic for that limited area where there will be residential traffic.
Okay.
And the other will show the construction traffic.
Mike? In addition to the approval from the police fire, we'll also give approval, right? For safety?
So, I reached out to, we had a development meeting with the applicant last week where we kind of got all the departments together. I do have an email from Kevin Kowalski that dated December 24th, that he would like hydrant acceptance reports, street names up in buildings to be labeled with the appropriate numbers, which was shared with the applicant at the meeting. So, that's one item or three things for Kevin that he needs completed for issuance, which Silverman is aware of. So, that's just one item outstanding.
Just because you had mentioned? We, yes. That's absolutely a requirement before we go forward. We are meeting with the town manager and with Mike on the site tomorrow. We met with them last week. We have another scheduled meeting, I think, 10 days out. And we're also meeting with Kevin Kowalski on the site tomorrow to go through our check off.
Did you just say the town engineer's in those meetings?
Yes, the town...
Did I say that? I don't know, but he was.
No, I wasn't sure if I heard you say that about 20 seconds ago.
I said the town manager.
Oh, the town manager.
But the town engineer wasn't, is participating in the meeting. Everyone was there.
And actually, Adam Kessler, the assistant town engineer, will be present tomorrow along with, we have his follow-up meeting with the group a week on the 16th in the afternoon. Engineering will be there too. So, we're going out with multiple departments to make sure that everyone's concerns are addressed.
Have we done this before with just the base pavement down?
The binder course?
So, while I've been here, at least with the other multifamily developments, no. Dorset Crossing did final pavement to buildings for issuance of CO. So did Highcroft. So, this would be different from what the other developments. And Garden Homes, same thing. They worked their way, completed areas, then came in. So, a little different here, asking for the binder coat. And since we're going out tomorrow and it's supposed to rain, one of the reasons why I've asked the town engineer, or at least engineering department, to go out there is we're going to look at areas where the catch basins are not at grade of pavement, whether there are ponding issues, which we bring up as icing concern for that.
Then, if that was the case, you would ask for the next layer to be put on? Or just not, or not grant this? I don't know how that works.
So, the commission has the rights for, one, you could say, no, we would like the site improvements completed. Or you could say that you'd like a bond posted for completion of the work, then you hold that money in place for completion. You're looking for COs end of February, 30 days from now, let's say, 30, 45 days now, February, at some point in the month of February. The asphalt plants would open, barring, barring that we don't have winter that lingers into April. It could be as soon as St. Patrick's Day in March or by the 1st of April. So, we're really talking about the month of April, you'll just, for, sorry, let's say half of February, the month of April, where you will not have a travel course down in that area because you wouldn't have final pavement till the plants are open. The applicant also is committed to putting out temporary marking out there so that, you know, your stop bars will be marked, parking stalls will be marked, so you don't have a free-for-all parking, even though he's got to pay for, have the areas striped twice. They have committed verbally to staff that this will be completed. I don't know, do you want to speak more?
Any safety issues with not having? Are there any safety issues with not having the pavement?
So, I've asked that question to Kevin Kowalski, and I have not heard, and I did not receive an answer to him, from him, on that. I've also asked the question, based on this, one of the, one of the results of our meeting was that there will be a potential barrier or fencing put up to separate residents from construction, along with a sign pattern that will identify contractors. You take a left, residents, you take a right, so that there's a clear, the residents are protected from construction activity. I've told the gentleman that from our staff perspective, we would like the building official and fire marshal to sign off on these plans because these are a matter of life safety, not a zoning matter, but it still should be connected with this result. So, we're waiting, they're meeting with Kevin to discuss those matters.
So, what happens if you go out and it's raining and it is puddling and it is an icing issue?
You may have, you may have comments from the town engineer that they have concerns about this for potential safety, of which the commission, like I said, you have one of two options, is no, complete the improvements, or two, request bonds be posted.
The bond doesn't solve the safety issue.
Doesn't solve the safety issue, though.
Yeah.
But I just want to...
That's why I'm trying to figure out.
I'm pretty sure they'll finish doing it.
Right. And they can't pave until they can pave. I mean, they can't do that any sooner.
So, the question is if, if safety is assured, then we have to rely on the town's engineering staff and fire people to give us the answer to that.
Yeah. Can we defer this till, for two weeks so that we get all the staff to review this?
So, you could, I mean, I'll defer to the applicant. This is not an application that has a time sensitive, it just says time sensitive for the applicant. Your next meeting is February 4th. So, if you're going, Martin Luther King Day comes up between now. So, it would be basically three and a half weeks before our next meeting, four weeks.
To defer to that date would be satisfactory to the...
It would be okay? I think it would be best for all of us.
Yeah, and I think that the only thing I'll comment on that is we absolutely want it inspected and appropriately so, but it is, it's an extremely flat site and it's, it doesn't have some of the challenges some of the other rolling terrains would have with some of this. We're pretty confident that we'll have good findings.
I'll speak to that as well. I've been in there and I drove in there.
Yeah.
Yes, I wanted to see it. I wanted to see how things were. Absolutely fine. I was able to drive, turn around, and like you can see the curves are in, things like that, so I didn't have any trouble.
They have to sell the people that are living there, so.
Thank you.
Everybody can take a drive there.
There is a point that they have to finish things.
So, street signage will be up as far as like stop signs and all that will be done?
And for the fire people, they have to know the street signs.
Well, you have the little paper.
Building numbers and those kinds of things. I think we should wait until, until our next meeting and get the feedback from the meeting and get the town... and get the feedback from the meeting and get the town...
Should be fine. I know we have the 16th for inspection.
Yeah, I mean, staff will be in contact with the group in the upcoming, the two weeks minimum, if not probably the third week before your meeting. So we'll have, not only will it give them time to make progress in some of these issues, but we'll have, be able to talk things out, and we should find some sort of resolution to any items that are outstanding.
Okay, how many units are going to be...
We anticipate 18 in that first cluster, which we've shown you tonight.
Okay, so we're nowhere near the deadlines for completing the front buildings.
May I ask Mr. Orsini to talk to you about the progress of the site and when you anticipate certain things to be completed?
I can do that. Go ahead. And I just wanted to say that, I'm sorry, who, Orsini? I think this issue was brought up by Dawn at our meeting last week, as far as her issuing a CO for even a small portion of the job without the entire site being done. So to defer to the 4th of February is absolutely fine, but there is a mechanism if we, let's say, wanted a couple of COs in the middle of February, we could still do that.
As long as they pay, as long as they have a favorable finding on the 4th, yes.
Okay, okay, no, that's fine, understood.
Well, and a favorable finding on the 4th covers something more than what we're looking at here.
Yes, yeah, let me...
If you're looking, if you're anticipating a CO that is a second CO beyond the 18 units that are here, the improvements that are associated with those other units are going to need to be done too.
Yes, understood. Yes. And they're CO individual units. There are 18 units that are going to have 18...
And, and the club house?
Which have to pass every, every aspect of this.
Clubhouse would be beyond 18, but that's, that wouldn't be in February.
Okay.
Is that where your sales office is?
The sales office will ultimately be in the clubhouse, yes.
But when you go originally here, where are you going to, are you going to start in one of the units?
Coming out of New Jersey right now, there's people that have signed up. They, I don't know that they need a sales office, but...
Well, they got to show something.
Right now, they have staff in New Jersey that are taking...
You have a waiting list?
Yes.
Excellent.
Tenants in New Jersey?
So after this approval, what would be the next section that would open up?
If you could indicate on the map for...
Yeah, where will you go next for approvals?
This building for the clubhouse.
Okay. Not this one?
This building is lagging in the road up behind us. Just to be honest with you, the bringing contract for the...
So they started with this one, this one?
Boy, that's pretty candid.
So four would be in June, July, and we're hoping to catch up.
Right, and what about these? What about the ones on the edge?
In the last phase of construction, so they'll go to the very end of this year and even into the beginning of the year.
Further to your interest, the footings for this retail space were for last week, and that's going to be fully under construction.
That's where the distillery is?
Craft course, craft course.
Gin, distillery is what we need.
Gin?
Kevin?
Okay, any other comments on this?
Where our money was made.
Will you carry that over to your next agenda?
I think we're, we're happy with the, I don't think anybody has an objection to having them occupy this space while they're constructing.
As long as it's safe, thank you.
Yeah. I think everybody agrees that as long as it's safe, we have no problem with you occupying those units.
I think that's this one.
Okay, I think we're at the end of the row. Yeah, nothing else from the staff?
Just have one thing in front of you. It's a...
Oh, yes.
Notice for the bar association, they're all day training at Wesleyan University. March 23rd, it's a Saturday. It's a very informative training. If you would like to attend, the town will pay for your attendance. You just need to know in the, probably the next two weeks. I'll do all the sign up. If you want to just email me that you want to attend.
It's the...
23rd.
March 23rd. Okay. I know that Donna and Kevin went two years ago. But it's certainly a good thing to do. So if you have an interest, sign up.
Motion to adjourn?
Second it?
Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing. We're adjourned.